I can hold it. I may talk about something else, though.
Really, what? Oh.
Good evening, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you've had a chance to review the minutes, how to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the April 25, 2017, school board meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, and we have a new agenda. It's a green one. There is one item that we are going to table pertaining to the copier contract, lease contract. And any other changes?
If you look on page two, Lucas, we have a couple grants that came in late.
Okay, and we also have added a couple of grants to the agenda, and so given those changes, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the main ninth, 2017, school board meeting agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, and we will start with a celebration. We have teacher tenure recognition.
Tonight's a special night for a number of our faculty. This is the night that we grant, the school district is granting tenure. The way tenure works in Minnesota is if a teacher goes into a district and they have not been tenured at a previous district, they have to work in that district for three consecutive years. And once they do that and they get positive reviews, and because we are a QCOM school, you may be reminded that we do evaluate all of our faculty members multiple times throughout the year. And anyone who's non-tenured, we have the administrative team, the principals, actually do the evaluations at least three times a year, and they are also coached by their colleagues. And so we take this very seriously, and it's a real honor for a teacher to obtain tenure in the state of Minnesota. If an individual teacher has obtained tenure at a different school district in Minnesota before they came here, they only have to serve one year before we grant them tenure. And so we have a combination of those tonight. So what I'm going to do is read off individual names. I'll have each individual teacher come up and get your certificate, and then we'll take a picture of you individually, and then we'll take a group picture. Is that okay with you, Judy? Okay, is Anna Benz here? Okay, Anna Benz is a high school faculty member, and Anna teaches mathematics. Mr. Terry Carlson? Come up here, this way, move over here, and, okay. You guys move, you got a picture taken. Mr. Carlson teaches construction trades in woods at Fairmont High School. And stick around, and we'll get everybody here. Chelsea Hayes. Chelsea is a first grade teacher at Fairmont Elementary School. I'll have you guys move out of my way. And Mary Jo Kerekis. Mary Jo is a business education teacher. She teaches both at Fairmont High School, and she also teaches the keyboarding for grades three, four, five, and six at Fairmont Elementary School. Emily Labus. Emily teaches elementary music at Fairmont Elementary School, and Emily is also a 2004 graduate of Fairmont High School. Trying to stay out of the picture. Teri Lindsay. Teri Lindsay teaches high school art and also is the yearbook advisor. Kayleen Schultz. Kayleen Schultz teaches special education at Fairmont Elementary School.
Where can I stand? She's over there.
Yeah, over there, fine.
Just trying to stay out of the way.
Okay, and just in time, Lisa Thielen. Lisa teaches at the high school. You go up here and get your picture taken. We'll never take a photo. Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and if we could have a group photo of all of you up here holding your certificates, and I think we may have a spouse that may want to take a photo, too, so after you get done here, we'll have you turn toward the back, and I'll get out of your way.
Anybody have a question, comment?
It's exciting. Thank you for coming to Fairmont area schools and sticking with us. We're happy to have you tenured.
Okay, very good. Superintendent's report.
First of all, an enrollment update. We're actually up two students from where we were last time, serving 1,661 students. We have 785 students at the high school and 876 at the elementary. And if you look at your pink sheet, I'll just highlight some of the future events coming up. First of all, tomorrow morning at 7:30, there'll be a school board breakfast at the high school. That's at 7:30 in the high school commons. All school board members are invited. On Friday, May 12th, is our special community service day that Mrs. Engelby talked about recently, and here comes Mrs. Engelby right now. And we talked about Community Service Day on Friday, and that's going to be a great event for all of our high school students, certainly is appreciated by our community. On Tuesday, May 16th, is our third strategic planning meeting that will be held in the William Bud Room at Fairmont Elementary. And on Thursday, May 18th, will be a policy committee meeting, and we'll be talking about, I think, two things mainly from the high school. We'll be talking about graduation requirements and some other document that you have coming. Chemical violations. Yvette, thank you. And so we'll really focus on those two policies. And then just a reminder, too, that commencement is coming up, Sunday, June 4th, at 3 o'clock, and that'll be an exciting day for the community, and so a lot of busy things happening in the next three weeks. That's it.
Okay.
Oh, one more thing. I just want to, last night I had the opportunity, I was asked to go and testify at the Minnesota Capitol. The Pension Commission met last evening, and our local state senator, Senator Rosen, is the chairperson of that commission. It's a very important commission, and they're looking at changing the pensions, both contributions of the employer and employees, and different penalties for early retirements for future individuals that retire. And it's not just on TRA, it's on PERA, TERA, or TRA, PERA, and all the other six, I think there are six or seven different retirement systems that the state of Minnesota has. State employees, police and firefighters, correctional officers, all those types of individuals. Very interesting hearing, so I was asked to go testify about certain components of this, and it's really nice to see our local state senator have such an important position. If you remember, Senator Rosen has two important chairmanships. She's the chair of the Pension Committee. She truly is one of the experts of the 201 legislators that we have in Minnesota. She's probably the number one expert on pensions. She just knows that law inside and out. And by the way, I did get a copy of the bill draft before I went up there, and I actually read the bill, unlike some legislators, and it was 110 pages long. And so, didn't understand it, but I did read it. But they had a summary of the bill, and that was important, so I brought that back. And then also, you know, Senator Rosen is also the chairperson of the Senate Finance Committee, so any bill that goes through the legislature that has money to be spent goes through her committee. So she's, has two important roles, and it's always good to get along with your local state legislators. That's it.
Very good. Finances. Julie.
Yes. You have, and I have, and I've got a few out of order. Financial reports for tonight. First of all, you'll have the April 2017 Treasurers Report, nothing to bring to your attention there, that's just the different balances that are in each account. On the flip side is, on the bottom of the page, transfers and wires for April 21st to May 4th. You see that listed down there, what our total expenses were for the month, or for that time period. And then on the top of the page is the broken down in the fiscal year 2017 adopted budget, the monthly expenditures, and the year-to-date expenditures. And because we're coming to the close of that, close of the fiscal year, we're about 72.6 for totally percent of our budget has been spent. And there is check registers that you have, there's just a single check that was for fundraising, and that was just to get that, a discount in place, so we did make that a special check for that account, or for that payment. And then in your detailed check registers, into the first section, there are the Commerce Bank, Pioneer Manufacturing Company. It's a product that's used to dry up ball fields. I thought that was kind of interesting. I didn't realize they had such a thing. You know, usually it'd be like a mop or something like that you would think of, but not out in the field. But this is Pearl's Choice Rapid Dry, comes in a 50-pound bag, and they put it out in the field, and it actually helps dry it up. And so, you know, sometimes with the wet springs that we have, we need something like Then check number 59751, Fairmont Opera House. That's a tour or activity paid with student activity funds for the grades three to six, and that was to see acrobats at the Opera House there, so. On Hampton Inn, check number 59760, that was for state FFA convention and the hotels. Or just the hotels, I'm sorry. But then the next one, Minnesota Historical Society, 59773, that was a trip to Fort Snelling. The sixth grade class attended that as a field trip. And last one I'm going to bring up tonight is the last, I think it's, yes, it is the last check on there, 59787 to Valley Fair. And I thought this was kind of interesting. It's a field trip. For the physics class, the advanced physics students went to field trip for Valley Fair as an educational experience, and how, I'm sure how physics are involved in Valley Fair to keep you from falling off the rides.
Well, the students that go to those trips, they actually have a booklet they fill out.
Oh, really?
It's like a, it's almost like a little test.
Oh, wow.
And it's, it's pretty intense, and...
The rides?
Well, the rides are, but...
The math, the mathematics.
But you know, but there is, there is so much physics that's involved in...
There is.
...the rides. Like I said, you know, you can go around and around, and you don't fall down. I mean, you don't fall out, you know?
Usually that's true.
Now, when you're in the ground, that's another story. So, anyway.
Okay.
Enough. Okay, I told you I had all the stuff I'd say tonight, okay? So with that, I'd make a motion to approve the April 2017 Treasurers Report and Single Check Wire Transfers for April 21st, 2017 to May 4th, 2017, and Payment of the May 9th, 2017 Bills.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on. New business policies. Nicole.
Yes, we have some policies that we went over in our committee meeting, and they're, they've been brought forward to you, the ones that had no changes or recommended changes by MSBA, where we don't have to approve in our board meetings, so they're not included. The first is Policy 606, which is textbook, textbooks and instructional materials. The main change that was made there is that according to Minnesota state statute, we have to have a procedure in place for review or approval of reconsideration of textbooks or other instructional materials. And so that, we can't, we have a form that we, was devised, and it is included now with this policy, along with a copy of the state statute. Essentially, the state statute is number 120B.20 Parental Curriculum Review, and if a parent has a concern about any part of the curriculum, they can bring it to the school and request that their students opt out, and the school will provide an alternative curriculum for the students. So that is now included in that policy, so we are in compliance with state statute. The next policy that we'll be reviewing, we reviewed was Policy 620 Credit for Learning, and all of the changes that are listed were recommended by MSBA. Policy 707 Transportation of Public School Students, the same MSBA language is what the changes are that you'll see, they're highlighted in red. And the next one is video recording of, I'm sorry, Policy 710 is extracurricular transportation. All changes there you'll see are noted in red, MSBA recommendations or statutes. The other one is video recording on school buses. The main change here is that it used to just say students, and now it says employees. So students and employees are held to a high standard, and both can be disciplined for behavior on the bus. And those are according to Minnesota statute and MSBA recommendations. And I move to approve Policy 606, 620, 707, 710, and 711 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Danielle, early release of senior students?
Yes, high school principal Kim Ness is requesting an early release for senior students who have completed their assignments, paid fines, and have made up detention. The last day of school for these students would be Wednesday, May 31st. Graduation practice will be held at 9:45 a.m. on Thursday, June 1st. An early release has been approved in the past several years for seniors, so.
Okay.
Now, I want to clarify real quick with Principal Ness. We started tradition a couple of years ago, the seniors with their caps and gowns are going to physically come over to the elementary and walk the halls of the elementary, so. Okay, very good.
So I make a motion to approve May 31st, 2017, as the last day of school for seniors who have assignments completed, fines paid, and detention time made up.
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Julie, Food Service Management Company?
Yes, we met as a group. You know, it's our time of year to renew our contract for food services, and so we did meet with several different food companies that had filled out the request for proposals. Those packets were sent out in February. A pre-bid meeting was March 13th. Those bids were due April 28th. Proposals were received from three different companies, Chartwells, Lunchtime Solutions, and Avions. And after the bids were opened, myself, Sue Nelson, and Superintendent Brown did review every one of those requests and the proposals. And after much discussion, we went through, each one of us evaluated each food company, and then we also went through and just see what was, you know, better, what was, you know, going on. And then we met again, and kind of our pros and cons with each one. We had some questions we put together and had those answered by those companies. Anyway, the long story is, the short part of that is that we decided to go, remain with Chartwells here. And so with that, I will make a motion to approve entering into a three-year agreement with Chartwells to serve as our food service management company for the 2017-18, 2018-19, and 2019-20 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, any discussion?
When it comes to the contracts, there is a certain length of time where we can review this and pick up a different provider at the end of every year. Is that not correct?
We can, but, I mean, you can do that, yes. It's a lot of time, you know, effort, you know, and, you know...
It's a good, it's a good time to get, you know, our feedback to them as far as what needs to be improved at.
Right, and that's what this is, this is for at the, every three years. But like I said, it's a lot of time, effort, and money that is spent for ourselves and also for the food companies to, you know, redo that. So that's why it's kind of set at a three-year interval. There has been talk, I've heard, within the state of Minnesota, even lengthen that out even more, just because, yeah, there's, possibly up to even four years. And just because it is, you know, it is so time-consuming and, you know, but yes, it is very important that we have a good relationship with Chartwells right now. We need to, you know, keep some lines of communication open between those people who are involved with our district there, and, yeah, do the best we can for them. But, you know, we always look forward to comments and that also, as to, you know, if there is changes that need to be done.
Just a couple of comments if I can. We had, we had a lot of discussion on this, because the three proposals, two of them were very, very close. And in fact, I think they were within half a point of each other. And so, as Julie mentioned, we had a whole series of questions that we asked the two finalists, and they were very good about getting back to us. The one thing that we requested, and it was agreed to by Chartwells, is to really have more communication between their company and our students and our faculty and administrative staff. One of the unique things in their contract, though, is that they're going to provide a $20,000 item there where they're looking at adding maybe another half of a, another side of a...
Serving line.
Serving line to speed the lines up at the high school, because sometimes a pizza line gets bogged down. And that's really important, because students don't want to stand in a line for 20 minutes. They want to get through the line as quickly as possible so they can sit down and socialize with their friends. And they also want to do some additional signage to promote, you know, the good products that they have. Last week, by the way, I don't know if you saw this or not, or heard about it, but they actually served in the, I think it was on Thursday, they served some lettuce from our greenhouse...
Oh.
...that the students from the ag department grew, and it was really good. It was, it was really tasty. And we, that's, that's just one of the examples of the collaboration that Chartwells has done, so. Your point, though, Dan, is that on an annual basis, we'll certainly review. I think they're going to actually get more active and have a student voice and have a student advisory committee set up so they can provide some additional guidance to the food service department, but, and I would encourage anybody in the community, if you haven't had a school lunch lately, it's worth, it's almost as good to go into Perkins, isn't it? Almost, almost, but...
But it's not, it's not the, the school foods, meals that, what we had when we grew up.
That's correct.
You know, there's, there's selections, at least where I came from, my, I mean, you had one, one line, one food. You just all went in line, you got the same thing.
Right.
You know, you didn't get an option to have salad, or pizza, or a sandwich, or a wrap, or, you know, you just didn't have that option. I mean, kids have a lot of options, and yes, it is a lot like going to some, you know, places other than the school to eat, because there are options out there, and there's something for everybody.
And there's unlimited fruits and vegetables, and they have a whole array of fruits and vegetables. I think there's four different types of milk?
Three.
Three, plus chocolate?
Well, scale one percent.
There's three.
Well, then lactate is different.
See, there's four. I knew there were. There's multiple types of milk. And of course, there's the à la carte line, and they have a yogurt serving machine at the high school.
Yogurt.
Yep, and so there's, there's, I would really encourage people to come up and, and, and enjoy, enjoy a meal. And many times if you get, usually, I personally eat at the cafeteria, either at the elementary or the high school, four days a week. On Monday, I go to Rotary, and I really enjoy the relationship that we have with Chartwells. And so I'm really pleased that we are doing another three-year agreement with them, but as Dan pointed out, on an annual basis, we'll take a look at it again.
I'm just glad that we have competitive bids and motivation for them to keep improving their product as well, so.
Right.
But I mean, and the food, getting back to that as well, is healthy. I mean, it's, it's, it's very conscious, and on, on the nutrition value and that, that is so much better for our kids, too, so.
Okay, we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. Okay, yeah, forgotten.
Forgot where we were at, so much discussion.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Dan, audit proposal.
By law, Fairmont area schools is required to do a budgetary audit every year, and in recent years, we've been servicing our audits by Clifton, Larson, Allen. However, they have experienced some large employee turnover year after year, which has led to some decreased quality of service. So our business manager, Sue Nelson, received quotes from proposals from both Clifton, Larson, Allen, and Idy Bailey. And after reviewing the two proposals, Sue is recommending that we enter into a three-year contract with Idy Bailey, beginning with the audit for the 16-17 school year. The business office staff support the recommendation, and after discussion in our operations committee meeting, we also approved the recommendation. The, the cost difference is very small.
$500.
About $500 between the two, so. I'll make a motion to approve accepting the proposal from Idy Bailey to complete the district's 2016-17 audit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Do we have the fee?
Do we have the cost?
Yes.
We do have that. It's in the contract, and I don't think it's in our packet.
Just curious, because it's part of the motion.
Yeah, because there, and there was also a cost listed for every year for the next three years.
There is.
And a different cost for each three years?
Because, I think it goes up $400 each year, so. Do you have that?
Yeah, it's, um, between 17 and 18, the total is 19,500. 2018 is 20,000. 2019 is 20,400. Those are the total professional fees.
And that's within...
Let me repeat that again, 19,500 for the 17...
2017, 20,000 for 2018. 2019 is 20,400.
Okay.
For the total professional fees.
And Dan, you're making that part of the motion?
Mm-hmm, that's correct, as, as omitted.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, now we have a complete motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Nicole, security system.
We, Tyler Garrison, head of Building and Grounds, is recommending that we renew our current agreement that we have with A-plus security, A-plus systems for the school security services. This includes the, the door swipes, the card readers, the security cameras, the maintenance of all of those. And we have had, we have worked with them previously, and Tyler's been very pleased with the services that they provided. We are adding cameras, which is not actually included in this bid. This is just for the maintenance and upkeep of those items. However, with more items that we've been adding, the cost has gone up slightly. It is now...
6,995.
Yeah, yep. And he said, even with that bid, it's still about half as much as what the other proposals were, and when you add in other incidental costs, it's still less than what the other bids were. So Tyler is very pleased and is recommending that we approve accepting the three-year proposal from A-plus Systems. And I therefore make a motion to approve accepting the three-year proposal from A-plus System to provide security services for the 2017-18, 18-19, and 2019-20 school years at a cost of $6,995 per year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Dan, participation admission and rental fee schedules?
Every year, the operations committee reviews the costs, the fees, when it comes to participating in extracurricular activities and also in renting school facilities. And also for the prices of season passes for athletics and activities. We determine them to see if any changes be made, up or down. The one change that is recommended this year is to increase the price of an adult season pass fee from eighty to one hundred dollars, which is actually the amount that it was, I believe, eight years ago. We went down and now going to bring it back up to a hundred, which would mean you'd have to attend fifteen events throughout the course of a year to make it pay off. Other than that, the activity fees, as far as the participation in all the different activities in junior and senior high would remain the same, as would the cost for renting facilities. So I make a motion to approve the change in fee schedules to increase the season pass, adult pass to one hundred dollars effective for the 17-18 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just want to add one more thing to the public's attention. In the past, we've also, we also provide free student ID badges for any of the homeschool students and students at St. John V and E and St. Paul Lutheran that are enrolled part-time at Fairmont area schools. We, we have a number of fifth and sixth graders that come over for band and orchestra. And so if they are enrolled at any time in our elementary or our high school, then we give them a student ID badge and that acts as our free activity pass.
So for clarification, part-time is, as long as they are enrolled in one class?
That is correct.
Or grade. Okay.
Right.
And the admission prices for activities would remain the same for next year as well. Seven dollars for adults and five dollars for students from other districts, not ours.
Right.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, personal, oh no, we had grants. Who's got that?
I can talk about it.
Okay.
Good.
Are you ready?
Yep, we're ready.
Okay. Every year, every, you know, CER does have to apply for grants. And these grants have been applied to from the Martin County Youth Foundation. The first one is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars for the youth summer nature discovery camp at Cedar Creek Park. Include the Prairie Ecology Bus with the presenters included with that. And the second grant is then for twenty-five hundred dollars for youth activity scholarships so, so youth can attend different events through the CER. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the following grants to CER from the Martin County Youth Foundation. First one for seventeen fifty for youth summer nature discovery camps and the second one twenty-five hundred dollars for youth activity scholarships.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any discussion? This is just a, this is not a roll call?
No.
No.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Dell, resignations.
Ashley Kaplan has tendered her letter of resignation as a Q-Comp coach effective June eighth, 2017. She's resigned due to plans to relocate. Ashley's been employed with the school district since 2013. So I would move to approve the resignation of Ashley Kaplan, Q-Comp coach, effective at the end of the 2016-2017 school year.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Terry Carlson has resigned his position as a construction trades teacher effective June eighth, 2017, due to relocation plans. This was Terry's first year of employment with the district. So I would move to approve the resignation of Terry Carlson, construction trade teacher, effective at the end of the January, at the end of the 2016-2017 school year.
I'll second it.
Motion a second. Questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And Sarah Weiss, a math teacher, has resigned her position effective June eighth, 2017, due to plans to relocate. Sarah has been teaching at the high school since 2015. With that information, I would move to approve the resignation of Sarah Weiss, math teacher, effective at the end of the 2016-17 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Nicole, employment?
Yes. Principal Ness is recommending that John Kesslerling be hired as a physical education health teacher for the 2017-18 school year. He's a graduate of Northwest Missouri State University where he earned a bachelor of science degree in health, physical education, recreation, and dance. John is currently serving as the K-12 Physical Education Health Teacher for the Coon Rapids Bayard Community School in Coon Rapids, Iowa, and has been in this position since 2011. During his six-year tenure in Coon Rapids, John has served as the head football and track coach and the weight room coordinator. I therefore make a motion to approve the employment of John Kesslerling as a physical education health teacher for the 2017-18 school year effective June thirtieth, 2017, at a salary of VA nine, step seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Principal Ness is also recommending that Nicole Kesslerling be hired as a science teacher for the 2017-18 school year. Nicole holds a master's degree in science education from the University of Northern Iowa. She's been teaching in Coon Rapids, Iowa for the past seven years and has instructed a wide variety of classes, including physical science, biology, STEM, anatomy, physiology, chemistry, life science, and ACT preparation. With that, I make a motion to approve the employment of Nicole Kesslerling as a science teacher for the 2017-18 school year, effective June thirtieth, 2017, at a salary of MA nine, step eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And lastly, Alex Schmidt is currently on a two-year leave of absence and ha, absence and has indicated that he plans to return for the 17-18 school year. He has been, he had been serving as the elementary dean of students and that position was filled during his leave. And now we are recommending that Alex assume the position of Q-Comp coach when he returns this fall. He will be filling the vacancy that is open following the resignation of Ashley Kaplan. With that, I move to approve the employment of Alex Schmidt as a Q-Comp coach for the 2017-18 school year, effective June thirtieth, 2017, at a salary of MA twenty-seven, step nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move on to board committee reports. Speck, Julie?
Yeah, Southern Plains Educational Co-op Board. We met on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth. It was kind of a special, kind of a work session that we had. We had a consultant for roles and responsibilities. Gentleman was Dennis Cheesebro from Teamworks International Incorporated. And it was just kind of an interne, interesting evening. And I think it's something that could be repeated over and, you know, again. What was most interesting to me was the roles and how, as Southern Plains Board members, what our roles actually were and were really explained to us really well. That we basically, you know, just like all of us, we wear two hats. We're all, you know, working in our jobs. We are board members here, but then as an individual, then I'm also a representative for the Southern Plains Board, which is another board at all. So, but it just really went through and explained things. I just, I brought this along, talking about management governance and consultation and just how that all works together, what our roles in each thing is, as with public and parents and school district and administration. It was just very interesting. And we spent, I think we started about five o'clock and, boy, I don't know, Joe, what was it, seven thirty? Was it eight?
It was about three hours.
Yeah, that we were there. And it was just really interesting and, you know, just a learning experience for all of us. But I think it's something that could be benefited to, you know, any kind of a board and how you can work the, how the group works together and just the dynamics and that.
Anything of value for our board?
There's always value to our board.
Well-
You know, but yeah, there-
Always more.
It was a reminder of the role of the board and that the board is really, the main purpose of the board is to be the listening post for the community, but also to set policy and then to hire administrators to carry out those policies, not to micromanage, but to kind of be the umbrella. And this is very complex in that, you know, because, you know, in this case, you know, Julie wears two hats, three hats, one is an individual. That was a big discussion we had. You know, how do you vote? Do you vote the way you personally believe in? Do you vote what's in the best interest of Fairmont area schools or do you vote what's in the best interest of Southern Plains? And we spent about a half hour on that philosophical question because it's the same question that every legislator or city council person or county commissioner asks anytime that they go to vote. You know, who, who do you represent? And ideally, you want to do what's best for everybody, but, you know, sometimes you also look after your own district first or your own personal beliefs. And that was pretty fascinating. What I thought was most interesting, Julie, was that all the superintendents were there except the Blue Earth. He had another commitment in his district that night. But it was nice to see the other superintendents and to see the other board members and actually have some discussion. And so that all of us were together in the same room at the same time. And that was really important. You really got to, and we have some new superintendents and new board members. And so that was interesting.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of those positions have changed since, you know, I, I think this is what my second year on. And some of them, there's been a new member the first year and the second year from, from different districts and that. You know, and for our board here in Fairmont, you know, Sandy Beckendorf, who was a past board member, she served on that board for many years, you know, and now I've taken that on. But still, you know, there, just so much stuff that we learned that night that, you know, stuff I didn't even know about. You know, how things worked and that, how the board actually were in, like you said, too. You know, representing each individual or, you know, how, it just, it was just very enlightening to really understand how, you know, and how the administration team works as our, you know, like Superintendent Brown and that works as our support, but as a educational for our position too, for our role in the Southern Plains Board. I mean, you know, it's, it's, you know, I, I looked, I guess I didn't even realize that. We learned so much with it that night. And I said, yes, it could be worked, you know, beneficial for any group. And, you know, I think we're doing some of that with our strategic planning somewhat, but I think we could take this even a step farther. So.
Okay, thank you. Policy?
The policy committee met on April twenty-seventh, from four-thirty to six, and we went over the policies that we approved tonight. Also, there was just a discussion at the end about the book Thirteen Reasons Why and the Netflix series. And I'm hoping that all parents receive the email from the school with some resources available to talk to your kids about that, whether they're reading the book or watching the show. Just some resources available for parents to help guide their, their students through that experience if they choose to participate.
Okay, thank you. Dan, operations?
We had some guests at the operations committee meeting. We had three junior students from the high school that came and observed. They were Morgan Sahoski, Marina Speckman, and Celia Simpson. And they're all interested in helping to put together some student advisory position or just to learn more about the way we do things, but also to help provide some feedback for us. So it was great to have them with us that day. The things we discussed were the food service management contract that we approved here tonight, the audit proposal, the participation fees, and the rental schedule that we approved, the security system contract that we appro, approved. One thing that we discussed was the future lease for copiers at Fairmont area schools. We have two vendors. We came to a preliminary decision, but then we decided that we want to go back and kind of crunch the numbers a little bit more. So that proposal is going to go back to the operations committee for some further review. And we also, a little bit at the end, talked about the new baseball bleachers. Because of the difference in the height in the bleachers in the press box compared to the old backstop, there is the possibility that a foul ball can go and break the windows in that new press box, which is really nice. So we don't want to do that. And we're also looking at perhaps putting some netting over that grandstand. So nobody will get plunked in the head by a foul ball, hopefully. And we'll be in contact with the baseball association to talk about that and getting that fixed up.
Okay, thank you, Dan. That is the end of the agenda unless-
No, 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 no.
SDCC.
I didn't, but I got-
Oh, that's right.
I did not attend the SDCC meeting, but I did receive an email from Jody Christensen regarding our preliminary scores for the MCAs. And there's a, big congratulations for the elementary school right now because for the third year in a row, role, third year in a row, there's been improvement. And this last year particularly, there was three percent improvement in math and reading and overall, and a five percent increase in, in, with our free and reduced lunch students. So they met their Q-Comp goal and it's very exciting to see that growth. And so I just wanted to share that with you.
That's just wonderful news.
Mm-hmm.
To finally be seeing an increase in their learning and, just wonderful.
I don't know, Principal Ness, you're here. Is there anything from the high school with test scores or anything that was reported that you'd like to share?
The eighth grade had met. Yeah, the eighth grade had met their goals in both reading and math at the eighth grade level. The eleventh grade math met their goal for the proficiency, but not in the free and reduced lunch. And then the seventh grade did not meet their goals in proficiency or, but as I looked at the data, you know, there was an increase over last year's scores of the same group for each at the seventh and the eighth grade in the reading. So we didn't make the goal, but we did see some positive results from those, so.
And we'll be looking more, in more detail with those results as time comes and we'll probably have a presentation, as we usually do, from Jody Christensen at a board meeting. But I, when I got that email, I was, I, that was pretty exciting news to hear. So congratulations and, and really, thank you, teachers and students, for all the hard work this whole year, both at the elementary and at the junior, senior high school.
Okay. Joe has linked on the agenda once again.
It's not quite six o'clock yet. The, I just wanted to make an announcement that we're making plans for the Summer Welding Academy. And we're proposing that the Summer Welding Academy take place the first three weeks in June after the students are gone. So this would be Ju, the week of June twelfth, the week of June nineteenth, and the week of June twenty-sixth. And this, so this will run for fifteen days, four hours per day from eight o'clock to twelve noon. And so students that take this class would get sixty hours of welding instruction. And for non-students, for non-Fairmont students or adults that are interested in taking this, they can contact the high school or contact myself. But it's, we're going to charge two hundred and fifty dollars per class. And that's the same fee that we charge for the Saturday welding class. And the Saturday welding class only has two more Saturdays left. And if anybody has any interest in just coming up and visiting them, it's really interesting. It's, you ought to see these projects that the students and the adults are making. It's, it's amazing. And so this Saturday and then a week from Saturday will be the last two Saturdays. But there's a lot of interest in the community for people to learn how to weld. And, you know, for fifteen days, they can get a pretty good feel for how to weld.
Is this for beginner level or is it very?
It can be either. Yeah, good question. It could be for beginning level because of the summer class. And there'll be a full-time assistant in there. Mr. Bodine Senior will be there to assist. And, you know, I've told some people that this class only costs two hundred and fifty dollars, but at my household, it's cost over a thousand dollars because my wife wanted a, a plasma cutter for her birthday. And so she got that and now she wants a welder. And so between the welder and the plasma cutter and the two hundred and fifty dollars, it's, but, you know, happy wife, happy life, they say.
That's right.
And the-
You finally learned that secret?
I'm, I'm getting there. The other, I just want to update the board and the community on staffing. Our administrative team and our teachers, once again, I want to thank all of you that have served on interview committees. We have a number of really super teachers coming to teach at our school district for next year. With the recent resignation of Mrs. Weiss in math, I believe the high school is still looking for a math teacher in seventh or eighth grade?
Yeah.
Seventh grade. And I think that there are four or five math applications that we're in the process of reviewing. And my hope is that the, the high school works on those pretty quickly so we can get that done for the next school board meeting. The, the other issue is that we have a hundred and thirty-eight students that have signed up for a family and consumer fax class- fax class, which is over and above the capacity of a full-time fax teacher. So we had posted the position for a halftime fax teacher. Uh, the, uh, Grenada Huntley East Chain though, uh, we've been working with them to see if we can collaborate and they're also looking for a halftime fax teacher. So if we can find a full-time fax teacher, we would share with Grenada. That's one option. The other option, uh, with the recent resignation of our construction trades teacher, we have fifty students that have signed up for that construction trades class and, um, they need a place to go to. So, um, I am in contact with a, a family and consumer science teacher who currently teaches in Albert Lee, who is a Fairmont High School grad and, um, but her husband is also a social studies teacher and so we're trying to find a place for him in the region. And, uh, but, uh, if, and she's taught a whole series of classes, so one of the questions we'll have to work with the high school team on is that if they want to, uh, just do a halftime fax or do they want to have a full-time fax teacher, the full-time fax teacher could teach additional classes. Bottom line is though, we're like one and a half to two people away from having a full slate. And, uh, in this day and age in Minnesota, that's phenomenal because there is a severe teacher shortage still in Minnesota. And, um, we're hoping that, uh, you know, we can get these, uh, done for, before the next school board meeting. But, um, once again, I want to thank the administrative team, the principals and all the teachers that have served on these committees. They do that voluntarily over and above their school day and it's so important. You know, one thing that we do differently that many schools don't do is that we really ask our faculty to sit on these interview committees and select their next colleagues and that's important. Yesterday at the Capitol, I was sitting next to the, uh, union president from Anoka Hennepin. They've had fifty-six teachers retire this year and they're in the process of recruiting two hundred and fifty new teachers. That's how fast our district is growing. Anoka Hennepin School District last year had forty-six hundred new housing starts and this year they have, uh, housing starts of, they have building permits of four thousand. Four thousand. Anyway. Big district. I'm done now.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Any last parting words?
Any other people that want to extend the meeting? No thanks.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay.